Call the order and roll call. Excuse me, Katie Sandrowski.
Here.
Lucy Nolan Dilbert.
Present.
Rob Pennell.
Present.
Genevieve Brodler.
Present.
Craig Sims.
Here.
Chris Dilbert.
Here.
And Rachel Witzit was present.
Okay, public hearings, we have none approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Uh, any public comments on the agenda items? Approval of the minutes dated May 2nd, 2023, did everybody get a chance to review those?
Yes. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes on May 2nd for the public hearing on Main Street Lot Split. It's gotta be two, because it's two different lots, right?
Correct.
I got a question.
Second. Oh, sorry, I didn't actually. We should probably adjust, you know what, we should probably adjust the agenda. Um, because we have the two sets of minutes. Do you want, do you want the agenda adjusted, Rachel?
Yeah.
Okay, so meeting minutes, um, regular meeting minutes, item A. Or special meeting minutes.
The whole lot split.
Yeah, we'll do the special. Or...
The public.
The public hearing. Thank you. So, public hearing minutes first, regular meeting minutes second. So, uh, rescind on the, or amend the approval of the agenda.
I amend my approval of the agenda and amended adding the public hearing minutes.
So, back to approval of the minutes, public hearing dated May 2nd, 2023.
Take your motion.
Uh, you're...
I started a motion, but we didn't give us a court.
Yeah, go ahead.
Public hea-, uh, or, ooh, a motion to approve the meeting minutes, May 2nd, for the public hearing on Main Street Lot Split.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Uh, approval of the minutes, regular meeting minutes, dated May 2nd, 2023.
Uh, motion to approve the minutes as presented for the regular planning commission meeting on May 2nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Uh, communication, correspondence workshop, um, we'll just congratulate Katie on her completion of the Six and Planet Program.
Yay!
And, alright, our president also took the program. So, thank you, both. Uh, matters for consideration. Old business, Perry Acres apartment expansion, revised site plan approval request, 32560, James Curtin Drive, New Haven, Michigan, 4048. Parcel number 200634126003, applicant PK Construction Site Plan Review. Um, they are looking for approval, they did send in a new site plan, um, which included the request for the sidewalk. Did everyone get a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Okay, as you're aware, um, just because I'm really late coming in, um, engineering and planning did not have, um, a lot of time to review it, um, but on the surface, there were no major concerns. So, um, what would be your pleasure with this?
I have a couple of questions through the professionals. Um, prior, all your prior questions, all your prior questions that you had, were those at least, have they been resolved during the process that?
With regard to the, the planning items, um, as it relates to some of the apartments, yeah, like those items were addressed. Um, the only outstanding item was the, uh, the sidewalk situation.
Okay.
And, Mr. I was here.
Is that me?
Yeah.
So, Med, I was asking if the, um, all these previous items that were in question for Perry Acres outside of the sidewalk, were those all addressed and handled?
Uh, let me check right quick, because I know that they've just submitted a new site plan of showing the sidewalks. So, I'm just looking for answers.
I'm pretty sure it was just the sidewalk something else. Did you want to speak on it?
Sure, yes, I'd be happy to. It's good to see you all again. I don't know if you remember me from a few months back, but, um, so, yes, we have revised our site plan to show the sidewalk being installed. Um, as we plan to do so, um, hoping to get approval up here tonight. I don't know if you're aware, but we have started construction on Bramblewood and have been moving tenants in and out as their units get rehabbed. So, we're very excited to see the progress there. We'd really like to dishearten Perry Acres as well.
Thank you very much.
And also, I was not able to make it here before 5:00, but I do have full sets, full-size sets of the apartment plans, if you'd like those, I'll just...
We have, everybody received the digital copies? Did anybody want, or a paper copy?
Yes.
Yeah, they're, uh, very small.
Yeah, I have a paper copy, I couldn't open mine.
Okay.
Hand this over to someone.
Let's...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, Rob, the, all the others are minor, considered maintenance. We did recommend that they look at existing pavement of the park lot. There are some areas that need attention, but those, those can be considered, uh, maintenance, except for the sidewalk, which is the major item. Since they, they apply that, we're good.
Their side, yeah.
Thank you.
Other question I had is on the actual, I'm looking at my spotter on, of the sidewalk, um, so I'm gonna kind of hold this up and see if you can figure out where I'm at, but here's this straight line from the back, and then it goes to here, and it kind of dead-ends at the light post, it kind of goes around it. A lot of, there's a way to soften that, because if somebody's riding a bike, I just feel like they're gonna run into the pole. So, I'm starting to churn.
Oh, sure, yes, yeah, so...
If there's a way to soften that?
Definitely, we can, yes, we can figure that out. Part of the challenge with the property is that, uh, within that, what would you, you would call the right way there, um, next to the road, there is a ditch. Um, so we would have to come off of that in order to install the sidewalk, which is a location of the current site planning.
Yeah.
So, those might hold, um, we are, we are getting bids to relocate those.
Oh, you can move it?
Right, yes, they would need to move to, maybe the sidewalk.
Okay. So, I would just say a heads up to, to Med, the engineering area, that, you know, keep in mind that sidewalk changes kind of abroad.
Yes.
You're gonna make a hard left, it's not their work.
No, that, yeah, that, that configuration is not gonna fly. Um, there are, uh, standards for ADA that they need to provide, and this configuration doesn't work. So, either remove the pole or, or soften it, those, those kinds.
Thank you.
And, are you, you not proposing any connections other than the first building to this sidewalk? I didn't see any connections. You're not required, but it's very recommended.
I believe all of the internal sidewalks connect to each other, and then there is that connection point to the road right away. So, instead of adding more impervious surface to the site, we decided to, to leave it with the one connection board.
Did you guys see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, in the front.
Yeah.
Only the front building is connected. But they can walk through the pavement, which is not recommended. That's fine.
You know, we've talked about this for two big meetings, and I think what they've, um, turned in meets what that was, meaning the turnabout.
Please.
Um, you know, with, with doing a full solid surface from front to, from rear to front, and as far as connection and whatnot, you know, there's paved parking, there's sidewalk up in front of the buildings. I think that, that served the purpose.
Is the sidewalk for the mailboxes, did that, the post office ended up wanting them?
I am struggling to remember where we relocated them to.
They're up in the very front now, but they're not drive up to, you know, like...
They are, you know, I believe we are still, uh, pending a review from them, so that, that might be subject to change, but, um, we will find a suitable location for them, certainly.
It'll be with their...
The wine is not dry enough, I gotta get out of my car.
I can digest the wine, I really like it.
Okay, does anybody have any more questions? Okay, um, their motion for the, uh, new revised site plan.
I'll make a motion as we accept the revised site plan from Perry Acres.
Uh, I would like to make an amendment to it, just, uh, we haven't had complete engineering, it just, he hasn't, you want, you still need to...
Sign off.
Sign off on this, right? Do you have more to do with this, Med?
Well, there's a question, typical setup is after, after the planning commission granted the site plan approval, they come in for a full engineering, right?
Okay.
Now, this, this is, um, you, you're gonna have to submit for a building plan, right?
Right.
And, um, part of that will be our review during the building review, we will do our engineering review. So, I would suggest your motion say this is approved, the site plan dated June 2nd, 23rd, subject to building, fire, and engineering approval.
Do you accept that?
No.
Okay.
We are here to accept or reject what they've submitted. There are other steps that need to be taken, that shall be taken. But this, this review right here doesn't necessarily have to be subject to, because they're gonna do everything, they could reject it somewhere down the line. But our main, main responsibility is to either accept or reject what they submitted. And it shouldn't be contingent. What they have to do, what they have to do is gonna be done no matter what. So, we attach all the little things to it.
So, does your motion is to accept the revised site plan as presented?
As presented.
Second.
Let me clarify what Chris just said, this, this is not a construction purpose, you're approving a site.
Correct.
A site plan.
Right. So, the, my contingency was for the construct, not, not for the site.
Correct.
So, I'm looking at a site plan where the sidewalk runs into the light, so I'm saying that's okay, good.
No, I'm thinking that they're gonna address that at that next level.
So, it's not good to put that in the motion, that we are specifying from our end that we do want these things looked at? We're not saying, take this and run. I, I guess I'm concerned about, so Med said it, so I'm like, oh, so Med said it, I don't think he says stuff just to say it. I think he says stuff to protect us.
And he's already, he has already addressed the sidewalk and the light bulb and that configuration. He has, he has already been combat, so he's well aware of it, and so I'm sure that will be addressed when it gets to that stage of the process.
I know, I agree with what you're saying there, I just say that we're saying this thing here, well, I'm approving it as a books. That's, even if it is, there's some changes in the, in the future, does that allow them not to make those changes, or?
But then, if they don't satisfy the, the, um...
We want to accept them as paid.
Then, then, that's on them.
Okay, motion on the table. Uh... Oh, I see. We have Rachel at second, um, the motion, could you repeat the motion, Rachel?
The motion was to accept the revised site plan as presented.
Okay, uh, do a roll call, please.
You include the date, because it actually gave us a couple, revised 7:00.
June 2nd.
Your question, is that on June 2nd?
Yeah.
Is that okay, Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
Rachel Witzit, is it yes? Craig Sims?
Yes.
Genevieve Brodler?
Yes.
Lucy Nolan Dilbert?
Yes.
Rob Pennell? And Lucy Sandrowski?
Yes. Okay, motion carried.
Thank you all very much, I don't need the semantics here, but accepted and approved, those are interchangeable, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for working this out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you need anything formal, do you need anything formal on that?
Um...
Our ready, ready tomorrow?
You know, I think we just need to, Perry, we want the process of the building department and the hearing, once we get our building permit, that's really all we need.
Okay. Thank you. Alrighty, moving on. New business, so, um, there's been some email communication, um, we're not going to really get into discussing the project tonight. Um, we just need to set up public hearing for next month on Hampton in manner of premier assistively living project.
As a reminder, because the next meeting falls on July 4th, we moved it to July 10th. So, I will make a motion to set up public hearing for July 10th at 6:30?
Good.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, um, next on our agenda is Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee. Um, he resides at 58560 Delaney, parcel number 260633133018, and he has requested to be on the agenda to voice some concerns, is that...
Oh, I don't reside there.
Oh, okay, you, you can expand.
Yeah, so I do own the property, and I find it for building permit.
It's a natural field, right?
What's that?
That property is vacant, isn't it?
Correct, it's vacant land.
So, you did the right thing.
Yeah, I was, I was looking, I got, I was approached and said it wasn't a zone for residential, which is what I think taxes on, where it's, when you look in, um, so I'm here to hopefully get through and build a house that's, that's ready to go, I just don't have a building permit.
Okay, so for everyone's, uh, that is true, this is his own general business downtown, um, correct?
Especially residential office.
Oh, he's residential office?
I just, it's residential office.
Okay, somehow within the communication, we had it as general business, correct?
Um, I believe it's general business.
Did everybody get a chance to look at where this parcel is?
Yes.
First of all?
Is it one of the parcels we resurfaced?
No, this is on right cheek side for Montech, um, Haven Place, but on the back side.
Okay.
Across from the church, kind of?
So, does it do a general business?
It is general business, okay, thank you, okay, no, that's good. So, yes, so, general business, so, um, that is where the hangup is, um, we just need to get approval. You can have a home in general business, however, you need to come to planning with a formal request to, for, to build a home in general business, correct me? On all of that. Um, so, basically, I maybe been communicating with the business office, correct, Becky?
Yes.
And, so, the formal request would be to come before planning, you have to fill out all the documents and everything. We can't waive that process, we don't have the authority to waive it.
So, some of that stuff on the landscape plan and renderings and all that, that you would do for a big development, that's kind of, you know, that's, that's an expensive task to build a house.
Thoughts?
Um, if I was gonna, you know, oh, he's already top plot plan.
Yeah, just give us a site plan. Just the plot plan shows the location of your home on the site, and then follows the step next.
So, I've submitted all that to building.
Okay, you would have to make a formal requi-, it would, it needs planning approval, so, I think the hangup is you didn't want to, I don't want to put words in your mouth, because I, what, what do you?
Well, you know, at first when I looked at it, I seen it was, like you had said originally, it was res-, you know, residential office, and there was a few things when you look into it, and then when I looked on the tax bill, you know, paying taxes on residential are one.
Okay.
So, I'm totally confused why they would issue a building permit, and what would I do there? Would I put a, an office building with apartments above it, I'm probably not here in New Haven.
Right.
Because it wouldn't, it wouldn't be suitable, there's houses, I built all the other houses on that street back in 2003 and 2004.
Right, obviously, yeah. So, I think it, it's just made, like...
And to do, I mean, to do the formal, if that's, that's it, but when I was, when there was the whole packet, like, you know, I'm doing a job and saying, sorry, we're putting a whole subdivision in Congress, I understand that.
Right.
But for here in New Haven, where everything's already tight, selling a building, I just thought that was kind of a far stretch.
Right, unfortunately, we don't have the authority to waive that process.
And then I was, I thought I was once told it was changed last year, so I'm like...
It was not, it has been that way, I think we researched it, I think we took it back, what, 20-plus years? Uh, we can't find when it, it has been that way for, like, some time.
Because I know I didn't go through the process.
Yeah, no.
I built a house on the corner, a few yards down, and I'm like, I don't, you know, it's pretty easy.
Yeah, that, that property was not.
So, is there any way, if I submit that paperwork and write the check for the 900 and some dollars tomorrow, we can expedite, instead of wait for another month of planning, it's already, I mean, I submitted this way before, back in April, hoping to be already out of the ground and...
If you want, yeah, I don't have a problem, we can hold a meeting for you, um, reach out to Becky again, go through the process, and then when it's, when you're ready and it's good, we can set something up if you'd like.
So, I'll just apply.
Okay.
Very good.
Yes, sorry, sorry, we can't help you more, it, it's just a process that exists, and we just, it's not for us to change it.
So, I guess I should submit, so with that, being that it's general business, I own another piece, a couple lots down, that I just purchased.
Okay, do you plan on building a home there?
Well, I was gonna put a rental in there, because it's kind of between, I was hoping to purchase an ex-house in Perry, I would do something different, but the owners don't have any intent, so...
Would you, let me ask this question, because I do not know the answer, but this might help you out a bit, could you put both in at the same time under the same fee?
I have to have a parcel of silver, like, uh...
They do.
Application.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, so, yeah, we probably have to be one at a time.
You want them in at the same time?
Yeah.
Separate application.
Yeah, with separate fees.
We have to have a public hearing, please.
I don't believe so, let me double check.
We have to have a site review?
I don't believe, uh, a public hearing, it's not a special hearing, it's not a...
What, what are you, I'm just confused, what are you proposing, your parcel, I, I, I...
Home, yeah, residential home.
A residential home?
Yes.
Or, or, home on?
No, no, residential.
A residential, yes. Okay, yeah, that's just a site plan, just record it.
Yeah, so, it's not a public hearing, it's not a special hearing, you see, you want a public hearing, it just means, um, just go through traditional site plan, it's a process, it's hard.
Those are all homes, why are they, so, that's true.
Probably...
I have a part of some type of future downtown by that or something like that, just like...
Yeah, that would be my guess.
Yep.
That's, you know, that's probably one street that probably should have been rezoned.
Probably, we can look at that, yeah.
You know, because, I mean, I could see Main Street being, you know, residential office, but Delaney, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I don't, I don't agree.
Is that something that we could do, is rezone that whole section?
We, we can, but I don't need with his time.
Right, for that one, I mean, he might be able to get it for the next home that he plans on building, so he'd have to pay that.
Yeah, we could definitely look at...
There are homes around it.
We could also, like, look at the actual apartments itself and see if we need to go through the, the planning commission versus just having a planning and engineering, and then straightforward, and do it that way for a residential office, for a single office.
Is a residential home allowed in that specific zoning, existing zoning?
Yep.
It is? There is no need for the planning, but mind you, because there, there are plot plan standards set by builders for residential home. It, it, it asks for the, the planner input, mind book, and the, it, it does not need a site plan if it's a plot plan.
So, the only issue is that I found was residential office and resident downtown general business in the development regulations. So, one of the items says all uses require, in this district, require site plan approval as one of the items in there. So, that's sort of the pull-up, is like, how we approach that, um, because I can see, because in the other section, it says all of us, not just single families, two families do not require site plan approval through the planning commission. But because of that item in the ordinance, that's where the conflict got there, it's, unless we call it an exception for that in the ordinance, but it currently doesn't say that.
We're kind of, like, locked into...
Yeah.
Something that needs to be corrected.
Exactly, that's one of those statements that probably need to be...
Right.
Because the attached was good, but it's like one of those other situations where it's like, once it's actually applied, it's the enforcement aspect of it, then you realize, okay, then there's this conflict point. And it's a right and right.
But the fact that he wants to move quickly.
Yeah.
Do what you said you were gonna do coming to office tomorrow, and do your advocacy, da-da-da-da, and we'll expedite that process, and that's something we can look at for the future.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we'll try to get ahead of it for your next property, um, but yeah, unfortunately, that's...
For, I'll come in and submit that tomorrow, and we'll...
Okay. Yeah.
We'll hold from there, and if you do that, we'd very appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll, we'll try to get you back in here as quick as possible.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good question, for cleaning it up, to, to change it to all the residential, right? Are people going to be charged residential office rate of taxes, or business rates of taxes?
Well, he said he's getting residential taxes.
He's getting the residential, yeah.
But we only have our rate, you don't have those. Yeah, so everybody's getting charged the same rate.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not, but are they giving their full, I know the words in my, their full homestead, if it's own, if it's not a home, its own property, are they giving their full homestead? Are they getting hit at the full rate, or the full amount, the 18 extra, isn't that 18 extra the difference, I think?
He doesn't have there anyway, so it wouldn't be residential for him, it's empty.
No, but I'm more concerned with the whole plot of land, and I'm, I'm a little worried that these people may get something to look into and make sure that we're not...
We're not, that we have a Lennox township level, so I don't tell you what they're getting charged, what their taxes are with Lennox, because that's with Lennox.
So, maybe, I mean, it's not that hard to, what we did in the past, because the rezoning division has already cleaned up, so it's residential property, that's, there's no question on your...
Yeah, I agree, I can see it on Main Street stating that, but Delaney, that's...
Well, plus, if, if it's own general business, what if somebody starts sponsoring a lawn company there, is that an issue that we would be, you know, whatever, you know, storing?
I mean, there, there's limitations for outdoor storage and stuff like that, it'd have to be some type of like office-type retail or professional services type use, you wouldn't be able to necessarily do it on a lawn service company. But two things, like, yes, like, in the question of taxing, like, that'd be definitely a question for the assessor, um, there is, I think on the SMA, there's a categorization for like zone, but also like the actual use of the property, um, which is, I don't know what, I didn't do their codes for, for taxation, like, so that's why it probably showed it as residential, because it's used as actual, as on children, though the zone is different. And then two, if we decide to rezone that area, we just have to make sure that, that the future land use plan kind of aligns with it. If it doesn't, it would need to kind of amend the future land use plan to, and just revisit that portion, because, um, it wouldn't necessarily look great if we rezoned land that didn't fall in accordance with that plan, so we just have to make sure, this is a...
Yeah, I'm really curious to know what it is on our plan that, is it, is it really zoned that way on our map?
If that whole space is residential, would they accept the two churches?
Yeah, I'm looking at our zoning map from 22, from February of 22, that we just did, and it's zoned.
It showing as residential?
No, it's zoned as general business and residential office.
And the churches can be on residential, right?
I did ask, I did ask, um, Becky to go back through the records, she went back as far as she could find on our, on our zoning map, and it's always been, uh, downtown.
Yeah.
Business.
But at one point, I mean, prior to 2022... But at one point, I mean, prior to two thousand, it was all pretty vacant, too.
The old houses on that street, there were the valleys, and then he built, I don't know, like half a dozen new ones.
He built, yeah. He's built multiple houses over there, but back when he built them, about twenty years ago, which there's really nothing different now than it was then, except that we are more on top of things. So this.
Because of the internal.
Yeah. So his confusion was, well, it had been, why can't we do that? But he said two thousand three, two thousand four, and it was. Yeah, that, it was, yeah.
And he's building even later than that. It seems like they, they did build.
In fact, it held probably where the bank, where the bank was and Hunter's, uh, shop and those lots went, those lots.
They went deep.
Went deep. And so I think that's probably why they were gen- general business or business downtown, downtown district or whatever.
That makes sense.
Okay, so I will add to the agenda then for next month, um, possible rezoning, zoning John. Okay. And then, um, okay, moving on. Um, last month, there were a couple things that we just brought up at the meeting. So this one is just more of a formal recommendation to council to have all new builds excluding condo subdivision, development projects be reviewed by planning and engineering. So for example, um, you know, we had the people here that were concerned about the grading and the flooding and all those sorts of things, easements. Um, you know, Dave does a good job looking at the construction aspect, but we have not been having engineering or planning look at any other aspect of rebuilds and community or individual rebuilds. So any thoughts on this?
No, I agree.
Yeah.
I went there except for the fact that it's accepting condos and subdivisions.
Well, because those have to come before us for certain. They're gonna be hard. These are hard about the plot plan for, like this gentleman here. Had it been zoned residential, he would have just gone to the building department, pulled his permits and built his house. But because it's zoned general business, he's gotta come before us. So I think this is referring to just the plot plan for individual houses.
So maybe in phrasing it, in addition to site condos and subdivisions and stuff like that, um, just so there isn't like exemption, but you're just saying in addition to those that we already review, we'd like to review those one offs as well, to make sure that it's.
So my concern is going to go back to Decore. No one has produced any meeting minutes or anything to say that planning approved lot one seventy, which is, or lot seventy, which is actually the part of the common area element of that subdivision, and now has a big house facing rationale on it. And it's bricked in around like a, you know, I'm waiting for a moat, maybe we could add that.
I do think that's, that's nice.
I think it's a different house. I'm guessing that they continue making it as a model to sell something else, because I don't think that model looks like, really like any of the other ones. But I, I just keep that technique, but. The house got built. If, if our two guys here had seen that come to them, they would have questioned it, where our building inspector did not. I love seeing their eyes on things versus just one set of eyes. That's where my, if it, if we can word it differently for those type of developments, that they at least get to see it, so that they could go, well, that makes sense. We approved this plan and yes. But again, this lot seventy mystery lot, I can't, I looked at a few minutes that I could find, and I can't find a single.
Something must have approved it. Something, something.
Remember that?
I would, I mean, you can't, I mean, when they put their plans in, you don't tell them, you said, did the house have to be set this way or the house had to be set that way? If the lot fits.
No, they added a lot at some point, just one.
I know what's wrong with them.
One of the ones did not show a lot.
Do you want, do you want to speak on it, Ryan, or no?
Yeah, I would think it was a.
Okay. Um, I wasn't going to, but if you would like to, feel free.
So, uh, what we did find in the investigation is that the master deed for Decore Park North actually gives exclusive rights to the developer to take any common element and turn it into a lot.
Yep.
There is.
So it's actually in, um, all of the master deeds, um, for the subdivisions. So Lamaro has the right to do that. Um.
My park can turn into a subdivision off the front?
If, if, if it's an active development, yes.
It's not active stuff.
No, not anymore. Right.
Or things we can do to.
They left, they left a subdivision, so that's not something that has to be. The other thing that we did discover though, is that Decore Park South, North, and Ambers does not have any approved P U D agreement, period. We have site plans, but we do not have a P U D.
Of course.
So that's why there's been a lot of changes that have been able to take place, because there was no P U D that actually held up to it. So, um, but yeah, uh, master deed does say that they have the ability to take common element, they can turn it into a site, um, at their discretion. Um, and once they did that, then it was just a matter of submitting the site plan, uh, like they would for any of the other lots.
What about the new Pembroke?
The new Pembroke? I don't believe it's in there. I looked at the Pembroke P U D. It is, only the Pembroke that we have proved, have approved is in there.
We don't have a signed copy of the approved P U D though.
For the new one?
For, for, I mean, Pembroke South. We have a copy of the P U D agreement, but we do not have a signed copy.
But it's also expired anyways. It's been a year since they came, they have to come back to a second. Yeah.
We're coming up on two years and a few months.
So whatever is there is expired, correct? That was our.
Um, I don't want to say whether, yes or no on that, but I'm.
John, are you aware?
I believe, Lincoln, with the traditional site plan, you have one year.
One year.
Develop it. Um, P U Ds have different, um, sunset regulation, like the ordinance says eight or ten years. But if it's not signed.
I think ours knows.
I don't know if it, if it comes to that eight or ten year standard, which might work in both our papers if we have to go back through the process again.
When we updated the P U D, the P U D ordinance with your predecessor, um, I guess you put it in our predecessor.
Yeah.
In your office, um, that was a big concern was that these things don't drag out for ten years then and do whatever you want me to come back, I think. So pretty positive that was part of the P U D ordinance was to.
There, there was some type of sunset aspect, I just can't exactly recall what the exact timeline is, but it's like eight or ten years.
Yeah. I know, I think it's a year.
Oh, for, for the P U D?
Yeah.
For a site plan, yes.
For a site plan, it's, it's a year.
But they can certainly ask for an extension if they have to change it.
But if they, we don't have a signed copy of that P U D agreement, then we have a place to go to get it, everything perused again and make sure there isn't full of loopholes like every other document that obviously we have or don't have. I don't want to keep repeating the same mistakes, obviously.
And keep in mind, that wasn't the master plan, where, which master plan isn't typically reviewed by, you know, planning or, or council or anybody. State of Michigan.
Well, at least we know how they were able to go that out.
Yeah, they know too much of what they.
Well, I'm sure they do. Sure they do.
So we should probably be getting master deeds before we approve any P U D or anything issued?
Well, that was, um, we need to touch on that as well as to whether to put that into our, we need to get them approved. So we need those to be approved more from a legal perspective.
Somebody needs to look at it, is all I'm saying.
Right. But they're not, what would, we discussed that, what was your thoughts on the master deed? Do you recall? We discussed that kind of last week a bit. Um, but approval of master deeds, how, do you know that or not? Sorry about that.
Um. Maybe we could add that to our next agenda?
We, yeah, we can, um.
So I just want to hear, um, it's, uh, it's, um, if a development is designed, uh, it's less than fifty acres, you have five years from approval to develop. Um, if it's over fifty acres, then you have ten years to develop the P U D.
This was twenty, right? Seven, one, four. I was looking at that one. Do you have the agreement? The unsigned one, of course.
So it didn't need to change? I just had made it to.
All right. So we'll put the master deed. I feel like there was something here that it was already on the books that we just haven't, I'm speaking, I remember, that is already on the books, we just haven't been doing it. Is that right now?
So you, no, I'm just, oh, yeah. So we already have, the ordinance already has language to require a signed agreement that's approved by those council, um, development agreement, P U D agreement that's signed and approved and reviewed by those council. So I think the point was that we didn't need to do any additional ordinance writing to get that protocol. It's a matter of like following through the process, making sure it happens.
Okay. So maybe just a formal recommendation, we can put that on there, as to just put it in writing somewhere?
So the current agreement was never signed by them.
So it's no good.
So we have the ability to make sure that there's no goofy loopholes.
Making assumptions that somebody hasn't signed it and we just don't have a copy of it.
That's very plausible, too.
So we need to check at the county because that's where that gets filed, right?
Or it doesn't.
Yeah, they are asking for construction program right now, so that's, that's not available. I'm gonna make it part of my checklist.
They could have silkscreened.
Oh.
Silkscreened.
Sounds like they're gonna start doing.
They put it over at the library property. It's a silkscreen. It's not on the property for sale. They make an official.
The library people have been putting out surveys wanting to develop that land, so.
Yeah, but there's, that, that silk is around the actual library property.
It's probably to protect that property or something or something.
See, but in the front though, I thought it was all kind of, it looked like, more like a library property, but like subdivision, right?
So again, I'm, I'm looking at a pass form, we have to go forward with the pre-construction meeting and start construction. We're waiting for a couple of permits from, if this P U D document is not in the, this is the time to ask.
Yep. Do we need anything from us or can you just?
I can send them a simple email.
Yeah, just, yeah.
I'll forward it to you.
Yourself and, yeah.
But do we have a mechanism that somebody approves this, not just a professional, but that it goes before council or it goes before planning and somebody approves this P U D agreement, someone approves this master, this actual P U D.
The actual P U D agreement went before council and was approved by council in June, July of last, of twenty twenty-one.
So we don't see that.
But we don't have the signed copy of it, if it's been signed.
But it hasn't been common signed by us either, probably.
We don't know that.
We can't.
Twenty-one would have been prior to this.
It's probably signed.
We just don't have a copy of it, probably.
Hey, call it like it is.
So that's, that's where we're going to do regional. That's where we're at with that. So, um, I will, uh, put the master deed on there, um, for next month as well. Maybe just do a formal recommendation as well with that.
So your recommendation?
It, it's just more so to put it on the record that, you know, it needs to, the master deed needs to be formally reviewed by legal and.
But also those.
And, and council, the plot plans.
The plot plans. That would be the original.
Yeah, the, yeah, the original thing on the agenda was.
Oh, yeah. Did we, you slipped that one? Yeah. Uh, did we ever do the motion on the plot plan?
No.
No.
Oh, okay. Gosh. All right. So.
You just announced it and then I questioned the, the subdivisions. So we did a very far bit of it.
Okay, thanks, Rob.
It just got me worked.
That's, I know where I am. Just not worrying. Okay, so we are back, we're, yeah. Okay, so we're back to the plot plans. Let's, um, how would you, Rob, go ahead.
I mean, with the M A C would need and maybe Sir Met can, um, you know, maybe you two could come up with that mechanism that would at least flash that property at you guys so you know what's happening at it. Um, I think that I, you know, I went, went through with you about back when, my mother's house. So the original rating that was approved with the plan was such and such. But what ended up, um, because of the way they put the houses, my mother had a three foot step outside door, um, and no way to put, well, legally built a deck because of the, you know, there was no setbacks. Um, I just want somebody else to, you know, when these goofy things happen and then they end up being, you know, expensive, couldn't even give me back the three hundred on the door, um, that I couldn't use, but, you know, somebody put a legal deck there and, you know, they got it up, but, um, I, I just want some kind of mech for that, those, the, these divi- these subdivisions to have somebody just besides the building inspector peruse it. I don't know how you word that. I see where, where we're going with the entire thing and I understand that part, but I'd like to see a mech that looks at those things, right?
So typically, most, most of the communities, don't, don't take this wrong, okay? Most communities have a plot plan standard, which is the single homes, they're not part of the subdivision. That site, plot plan, I'm not gonna call that site plan, plot, that comes to planner, engineer, and builder and gets approved without planning, commission, involvement. For the subdivision condominiums, that, that process has been more complicated than what you just said. Um, there are actually two checks that are required by, by the, by these committees, a preliminary grade certificate and final grade certificate. So what that means, they submit a subdivision plan, um, because they're planning, they go to engineering, we check all the grades and all that. And when they come in and build the house, they have to provide two certificates. One, when they dig the basement and have the, the, the rough grade, is that what we call a preliminary grade certificate, to make sure that it's in line with the master grading plan that was approved by planning. Once that cleared and they finish and they restore everything before they, before they put the sign, there's a final grade certificate they have to provide again for engineering and planning to look at it again, make sure that they're within tolerance and they're not three feet higher than the original grade. They can only be allowed two inches or three inches from the original grade, because subdivisions are graded tight. They're not three hundred feet away from the next house. They're only fifteen feet away from the next one. So it's very critical for, you know, heavy development like in McComb or Shelby, Natasha, you cannot do, um, any house and you would not provide their schedule for that, those two certificates.
So our ordinance currently doesn't provide that?
It does.
Require that?
It does require a plot plan.
For a grade.
Grades is part of the plot. It does not exempt it. So the process right now, they're, they're, at some of the agendas, they're viewed up through by planning and then engineering. They go from construction. These individual plot plans are processed by the building department, only your building department.
That's where I have to hang it. Because, and I'll say it again, I don't know what that guy does, but in the complication, I don't have time.
Well, and that's what the recommendation is, that it doesn't just go to the building department, it goes to planning and management.
But it, are you saying that excludes a condominium project?
No, no, no.
So everything will be seen by your eyes and his eyes?
Yeah, because we're all.
And the building inspector's eyes.
Right.
He's already seen everything. The only thing he wasn't already seeing is what we're addressing here. He was already seeing everything else.
So the situation that you were referring to, I don't know when that happened, but maybe the engineer that worked here then.
His father.
Was not on case or didn't, didn't review or didn't?
No, he blew so much smoke up. Yeah, it was. But the house was built and the plan was done and there was a whole lot to do with it, I mean.
Okay, let's get back to this, sorry.
Yes, but we want.
So do we, um, so recommendation council have all new builds, um, so however we want to word that, be reviewed by planning, so do we want to make a motion on that?
So we.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carried.
In that recommendation, then of course that's something you two recreate.
Yeah, we'll just, I'll send a letter over to Becky and, if you want to. However, just make sure that that's just instilled on all. Did you want to do it or you want me to do it?
I'll write it down low.
Okay.
In that one tonight, I'll leave the council packet.
Okay, awesome. Oh yeah, I guess that has to be a council. So, okay, uh, sign ordinance, amendment, consideration, discussion and action, did everybody get John's email? John, do you want to speak on that?
Sure, um, so I believe it was last month?
Correct.
Yeah, last month we discussed looking at the side ordinance for situations related to corner lots, or commercial lots specifically, um, with multiple entrances and whether or not we want to create um, provision within the ordinance to allow for two sides in those situations, given the double frontage um, that would exist on a corner lot. Currently, the ordinance does not permit that type of setup that leads to oftentimes like a variance request or, or something of the like to allow for that type of, of development feature. I just researched and I found several different solutions and I thought this right here, which was pulled from these generally high side ordinance, to me is something that might solve our issue, or at least address it, not say these exact dimensions or, or standards, but it's like something like this could work. Um, if we look at the show, the high side ordinance states, for developments having more than one frontage on a major or secondary thoroughfare, having a light of way of at least eighty-six feet or greater, one precinct sign shall be permitted to be located at a each frontage, provided the distance between the two sides is not less than five hundred feet, measured along the body of light of way line. So, that is something that is designed for larger corner lots, um, typically and, and the vision is being like a grocery store or something like that, where you have a large distance between your entrances and that way it allows only those two sides in, in those larger footprint situations, which kind of makes sense because if you're a large footprint, you have one side here, your second entrance would be kind of far off, like you need that secondary side who would not be able to see the other side on the other road. And, and this would exclude small lot developments, you don't have, let's say, a, a small pizza shop, let's say, which is a corner lot, having two light side next to each other, which would be just obstructed at that point, where you can pay safety hazards with, with clear vision lines and everything else. So that's what this ordinance would kind of create a solution for. So yeah, have you, any thoughts on that or?
So what, it's pretty much saying that the, the corner that, that we all know the question wouldn't necessarily call, but.
Yeah, unless, unless we do something with that five hundred foot, um, distance.
I don't think any of our corner lots would fall under that.
Five hundred feet.
Going crashing twenty-seven miles could be, that could possibly someday.
Yeah, but that just, given the size of our metal, that seems like a big measurement too.
This also only addresses signs on ground, road.
Monument?
Yeah, monument sign, I think part of the request was having another one on the building along the other road.
Yeah, and that's where like we could, we could change the language on there where corner buildings can have that double wall sign type setup, if that's something that the, the community would want. That's something we can, we can try to make happen with the side ordinance.
So this would qualify on that, if this, on the corner unit, but what about the other units down the line? So I, to me, it seems more logical to, to the, um, the monument signs that the others, so it explains the differences within that area versus.
Yeah, that's a good point, because it really does only affect.
It affects the land business.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, so that's where like the, with the monument sign situation, typically when you have a multi-tenant building, there are multi-tenant size standards, so each type would have some proportionment of monument sign, not to exceed, say, something square feet, for total signage area, um, and you have that type of standard. And then it'd just be the unique situations of that corner unit, what to do in that situation. If you, whether or not you actually want to rectify that through allowing them to have two wall sides or not, that's the real question. Is our visibility good, i- is our current ordinance like hindering them from having good substantial businesses, is visibility struggling? That, that's the question, are we actually stopping people from seeing by having this sign situation? I'd argue that we aren't, um, I think many of these locations are probably visible. If you want to have the multi entrances thing, I think that makes sense just to, to acknowledge like people going north and south in one direction or east and west in different directions, can see all the tenants in that, in that building, whether, whether even not yet visible, until you turn that corner, you see the rest of the tenants like with your own eyes versus if you see a monument sign. I think that more so addresses probably the visibility issue, um, versus somebody just wanting to have two wall sides next to each other. Um, because I would, like I said, I'd argue that they're pretty visible as this, so.
Okay, so I guess my question is, do we want to go here or do we want to leave it where just case by case and they just go to Z B A to figure this?
I don't think so. I think we should open up the opportunity so that when they're building these site plans, that especially a monument sign gets placed properly, not later on.
Yeah, the monument sign is.
The monument sign is, there's usually power running to it, so they've already laid the pavement down and they've got to work around all of that to put a new monument sign.
Yeah, and make a lot more space.
Yeah. So maybe it's something that we should look at, including, and if they don't like that, then they can.
Because I'd also argue, if you are building a brand new building, you kind of, you go into the situation with, you understand your site constraints. You cite, you understand like your location and if visibility is, can be concerned, there's a way you can kind of design it from the, from the outset to address that versus, I'm gonna stick this rectangle matter where it is, like in this situation, I'm gonna ask for variance to solve my problem versus, I could have addressed it in the beginning, which is designing a building differently, um, to be more visible. But now, yeah.
The original plan, if I'm not, well, that building was going to be on angle.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, but I think it was before they merged those two parcels and they tore that house down, but, you know.
No, I thought we could have that.
Or he told us he could have used.
I, I believe it was, I believe it was an angle towards the end, it was on the angle that there was a problem with setbacks and stuff, there was something there.
Because it was going to be parallel with the traffic line in the map.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there were issues with parking, with air conditioning, with
Something.
deliveries, with dumpsters, that they had to change the orientation of it.
So it never came back to us to approve that and just call that done?
No, I think it was done.
No. Somewhere else. Because nothing, anything like will be approved.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of the commission with this? Do you want this on next month's agenda as well?
Yeah.
I would.
Okay, do we want to, like, work on the wording, how do we? So, we would be amending the sign ordinance? Okay.
I'd actually ask, so Rob, do you have the recommendation mentions that separation standard for the five hundred feet versus kind of something less, do you have any thought on it?
Uh, beyond my expertise, uh, as far as engineering, no merit for this, um, it's more zoning. We don't have any preference.
Okay, so maybe.
So it's really up to your purview, um, I can, I can, for the next meeting, I can select a parcel, say, and let it show how it actually visually, visually look like.
Okay.
Obviously you have an idea of what the dimension actually is, I think, applied, and then maybe set those different type, like numbers, say, five hundred feet, four hundred feet, whatever it is. Do you guys have the idea off the top of your head of what you'd like to see, if it's five hundred, four hundred, three hundred, I can show those depictions?
I mean, if we'd done that properly, probably right in the first place, we would have put the monument sign on the corner so that it would've been seen from all angles, but it wasn't. It was put in the front, not just on crash. So, I mean, this, I guess that seems we gotta look at, but in this particular case, I, I think we should put it in the back of the, in that case, just do it, do it right the first time, but I don't, this is his particular case, but he still had to go through the deal.
Well, that's the, the awkward situation with the whole thing, it's like, as presented, it is allowed, right? Like where he put the sign was permitted, like, and then it's up to him, like that's where his pleasure was, you know, or, or their pleasure was. Whether or not they were thinking of visibility at that point, who knows? Because they could have put it, if you said on the corner, it would just probably solve their issue, design the sign differently, it would solve the issue. By doing the ordinance amendment, it does allow for the flexibility of, do you want to put it on the corner or do you want to have to set up? And then it's up to the developer to figure out which option they want. And then, yeah, like they said in the beginning, they just have, then it's up to the developer to make a smart decision on, on how they.
Well, if we have an ordinance that says that, that also gives the appeal process, well, they did try to, you know, you're coming for an appeal, you could have done this if you, it's in our ordinance. And that kind of puts a kibosh on them. Because you want to keep your appeals down, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, and even a lot of this, I think, special combinations for just like these unique circumstances that truly aren't like a burden the applicants for the areas, is, is more so just for their desire to be, to achieve excul, you know, um, versus it's truly a hardship for them because of unique circumstance on their property or because the ordinance is, let's say, designed in a very unjust way or something like that, that leads to a hardship for that property. I don't, I don't argue that it doesn't, correct? But it's more so just designed at that point from the outset. But like you said, if, if we have other options, I think it, it wouldn't hurt for, for that. Then I think also, if you have, let's say, these larger numbers, that maybe, it may encourage people to then create lot combinations in larger, larger developments, so.
And the monument sign would also allow to be in the visibility area versus, if a popping sign's all around the building, I'm just gonna put that corner out, there's trees gonna grow in that, that island, that is gonna block those things anyways from being seen from the road, where the monument sign will at least have their name up there, so then, you know, people drive by and see it.
Okay, so, for the sake of, we'll put it on the agenda for next month, come up with some language and go from there. Did you? Um, oops, sorry, uh, planners report?
Uh, do you want to talk about lot split?
Um, sure.
Um, there's also a request for addressing the lot split situation that we had last month, where we did the lot split, but led to developing a, or leading to a non-conforming lot situation because of the resulting structure kind of set with the, with the new setbacks and how they were applied. The language within the ordinance did not prohibit us from approving that lot split on those grounds. So that was one of those things like today, that we kind of, that's just like these weird, um, stress points that exist with the ordinance until you actually comply it. So I found some language, actually the great township zoning ordinance, that, which is go to the non-conforming lot section. And that language just says, parcels shall not be divided in any manner that increases non-conformity, causes an existing structure or site proven to become non-conforming, or creates one or more non-conforming or subsanitor blocks. So that, I believe, creates a pretty good catch-all, um, for many different variables and conditions to prohibit us from creating non-conforming situations in the, in, when we do a, a lot split. Our current ordinance doesn't have this, um, and I think having this would, yeah, could rectify that.
I do like how that's worded, it stops creation of non-conforming lots, it prevents, um, landlocked lots. Prevent a lot of things.
I'm interested, that was adequate, um, could they argue hardship if it's gonna cost them, it's over a mountain to, to tear that down and, and remove?
I mean, you can, you can probably try to argue it, but I think the, the language within this is probably pretty true and true and then protects the village and, and the whole public health, safety, welfare type catch-all that is used for, 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 right? I, I think we, we probably win that case.
Because I know their intention is to build, but what happens is they don't, now we just have a lot with their garage.
Yeah, because you, you would say that, that, that encroachment on the setback could lead to a hardship to the other neighbors around there and it's a safety issue because of setbacks are separated for a reason, for its vehicular safety and whatever else. So I, I think it's justifiable, I think it'd be pretty defensible.
We've always maintained the position that, uh, financial hardship is not a excuse.
The only time that, that does come into play is like we, let's say, rezone or do something, if you're zoning, that, that leads to complete deprivation of value of the property, so getting rezoned something to recreation, then you just strip that person's, like, any, any semblance of, of, of benefit from the property. But as long as there's some aspect of economic benefit and developability of the land, then it's, it's hard to kind of see the kind of stuff.
Yeah, because you know, for three months period, it was claiming financial hardship. You know, I was just throwing it out there to check this situation out.
Everybody has financial hardship.
And I think that just to, like, if we, we would say basically that it'd be conditioned to remove that building in order to get approved, otherwise we would just deny it, and at that point, they're not really in the range of us, because they don't have to destroy that building, so.
Yeah, one could argue that you're building a whole, uh, house, would that create a financial hardship over carrying the building down?
Yeah.
Lots of excuses are good, you know.
Yeah, the cost of carrying it.
Very angry, it's eating into my contingency hardship, I mean, there's, that's why you made it, to keep it.
We won that battle.
So, okay, I will add this then also formally to the agenda, because I didn't want to add it formally on the agenda tonight. And so we'll do that next month.
And then, um, if you are going to do it on this, um.
Those mean public carriages. Public carriages, right?
Um, so, we would probably do one for the non-conforming lot, like the last one situation, I would probably hold off on the side ordinance until we kind of carry the language that we're talking about.
We'll put it on for both, we can discuss it again next month, and I'll put, add, uh, we'll, I'll add set a public hearing for both next month and we can decide what we want. So, okay?
Yep.
Um, anything else, John? Um, anything else, John, for you?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, comments on agenda items?
You just came to visit.
You just came to listen, so. Call from the table?
Um, so we're, and the things that we're talking about and the things that we kind of got bamboozled on through PUDs or master, is there places within our ordinance that we can put these processes that they have to be handled versus some kind of administrative thing that may or may not get looked at, because I mean, obviously, I don't think anybody would, over the years, just, "Oh yeah, whatever you want," you know. But it's not on a, it's not in the ordinance to look at those items and make sure that they're handled. And that's where it's got to be, right, in the ordinance?
I believe, currently the PUD ordinance, like I said before, has it that it needs to get reviewed and approved by council. I believe that the assumption in that situation would be that, once approved, it is signed. It is kind of conferred to the language there. Whether or not we want to have it like the actual like flow chart written in the offices, just so we know that like different officials would then just kind of follow up with that, with the sequence of events to make sure something's executed, that would be different, just setting up an internal flow chart. But I think the ordinance as it stands, like, if you're going to approve something that usually has some type of legal binding to it.
So that's covering the PUD, that's not covering the master deed?
Covering the documents of the PUD.
Yes, the documents of the PUD.
Which includes the master deed?
I believe it typically includes the master deed.
See, for that, I have to really appreciate, there's a way we can tighten up the loopholes.
I mean, we're going to change a bunch of ordinances, we can always, I mean...
Imagine a few.
We could do them all one night.
Yeah, I'll take a look at the PUD ordinance and compare it to what other agencies as well have and see if there's anything that could be tightened up, or if it's, like I said, flow chart.
Yes.
Yeah, it's already, I'm reading it, it says, "Within 60 days after council received your recommendation, a PUD must be submitted as reviewed by the attorney counsel and all the, all the consultants."
Yeah, I think he's looking at like the master deed.
Well, the master deed is part of that.
Yeah.
Hey, I believe we do have a company, but the master deed, the matter, but not the actual agreement.
I'm really curious if that language is all new, or if it was on our previous ordinance and just didn't get done.
I guess, can I ask Rachel something?
Yeah, that's great.
Because Rachel's probably the only one here that I think has filed under. And was the master deed ever reviewed by you guys or L? For the...
The master deed, no, not that I can recall. The PUD was, and it was reviewed, and had changes, not by L, by Sean.
Oh yeah, by Sean.
So there were some changes that were made to some of the language that was in the Pembroke South PUD.
Okay.
Maybe we should throw in that.
Hope we just don't have a signed copy of it.
Right.
Do we need to have any more space for a PUD?
Sure we do.
27, actually.
The whole southeast corner, the southwest corner of the building could be operating there.
Yeah, you got that, and across from there, and the whole, the 47 acres. Because that has to be, would never have been done.
We've got lots of property.
I thought that was the last, last one period.
Yeah, that's, that's actually never come back for.
Because the PUD isn't just residential housing, I mean, Myers is a PUD.
Yeah, downtown development would be a PUD.
And you do mixed-use development, you do residential, like you said before, PUD ordinances, which was my objection with previous application for PUDs, it's just like, do a PUD to provide something extra, as a trade-off for what you're using, Tennessee dollars or whatever else, technical, all the land or creative features, whatever else, if you don't have any of those sort of tables, then follow the developments as they stand. And I think there's some pretty good teeth negotiating leverage with PUD, we have, if we want to apply it.
Okay.
My other thing was, have we ever, I mean, we're, we're back to doing ordinances and the amount of time you put into the sign ordinance, and still I've seen no movement with the non-conformity.
There's a, Dave gave a full listing, I don't know where that's at as far as everybody being...
The time you got.
Yeah, Becky did receive a full listing of, I'll follow up with her and see if she sent out letters. I think that was like the process.
I mean, it seems like Tracy left here after meetings to question him, but we know for that as well.
She should have stayed longer.
Oh, was she here?
Probably, she was five years, five years.
Five. Which is probably up.
It's got to be really close, it is. How long did you do that?
Um...
Yeah.
We did before Eli started.
You finished up the sign, did Jeff do all the sign on this?
I ordered Jeff, but Jeff was the...
He was still, have you?
The design, so it's probably been four or five years.
Yeah, I think it was 2019.
But it's kind of regardless, if we don't have any, not that it's always there.
Yeah, I mean, there has to be, I would imagine there needs to be some type of notification process if you're not applying. So at least it would be proper, the process, because you want to apply, say, people, and you sort of say, "Okay, it's been five years since we've done this ordinance," and now you should be able to notice to be able to rectify this situation, like a shot clock or something.
Where those notices sent out?
I, I just made a note to call Becky tomorrow. I know that Dave turned it in, and it wasn't all that long ago, to be honest, probably the last six months. So, maybe a little more than that.
Can we do that, or do you have?
I do. I'll, I'll let you send it to me. Do you have it, the sign ordinance list, or the sign...
It's kind of handy having them over there to cover.
Do you have that?
No.
I'll, I'll see if Becky has it, and I'll, I'll send it out to her. Or she'll have her, so I'll do it. So, if you want to do a quick, just because you're here, Bry, and John, I mean, I wasn't going to be planning on bringing it up, but 11 minutes for it, Garage of Port Door Authority, you know, is that something that we could start looking at from this perspective? And then, or is that something you'd like to see if council would be interested in supporting, maybe at your next meeting? Does that talk about?
To be honest, I'm, I'm not up to speed on that. I know we've briefly talked about it, just in passing conversation, but maybe we have a...
Have us sit down?
Yeah. Catch me back up to speed on that.
Like, we'll get past this and maybe a workshop in a couple months on the ins and outs of it, what do you think?
Yeah, we can talk about it, I think, I think it seems kind of, do you see what we want to talk about? Because there are completely developed persons, they're packed too, because it seems to have a lot of... You may have some specific state language guidelines on how those areas are set up, else to discuss, because those can actually cross boundaries.
Yeah.
If we're looking at a specific intersection, let's say 26 crash, it's willing just us...
Right.
That's just, you know, do we want to make this an cross jurisdictional, because we need to improve was the entire intersection, and we want to do a core of that way? And unify division and whatever, that would be a discussion point, or we just want to focus it within village, or you want to develop, you can talk about that.
Yeah, maybe we'll clean this up and then go there. Uh, anybody else? Okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?